Don't be hateful, they're better. Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by, you'll be joined in shortly.
Good evening and welcome to the February meeting of the Prince Edward Planning Commission. First of all, we want to make sure we have a quorum for the meeting tonight. I'll read the names and just give me an eye or a hello. Mr. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. Gilliam?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Page?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Womack?
Here.
Great, we have a quorum for this evening. First of all, we'll start out with a pledge of allegiance, if I can ask everybody to stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is, as with every meeting, is approve the minutes from last meeting. Has everybody had a chance on the board to review the minutes? Do we have any suggested changes to the minutes? With no changes, we'll take a vote to approve the minutes. Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Vote is passed, minutes are approved. On this evening's agenda, we do have a public hearing, Blackwood Capital. I'll just go over briefly how the public hearings will go. Again, we give the proposer the chance to come up and present their special use permit. From there, once they sit down, if there's any questions that are requested by the board, those will be answered. After that, I'll open the public hearing. We will take the names of anybody that signed up outside first to come up and speak for or against. And when you do speak, we're going to ask you to come up to the podium. After that, we'll open it up to anybody in the audience here. And we ask everybody just to come up again, give your first and last name, where you live in the county. And from that standpoint, then, we ask everybody to limit it to three to five minutes, no more. And then, once you're done, we will resolve and the requister can answer any of the questions that come up, if they're negative. And then, from there, we'll close the public hearing, and then the board will review, and then from there, we'll make a vote. Okay, with that in mind, can I ask somebody from... Okay, I'm sorry. Well, Rob, why don't you give us an intro first?
Okay. The county received an application by Blackwood Capital LLC for a special use permit to construct and operate a convenience store and fuel station on a parcel of land noted as tax map number 051-A-33. This is located at the intersection of Commerce Drive and State Route 15, Farmville Road. The operation of the convenience store isn't allowed use, however, a fuel station does require a special use, so that's why we're here tonight. The whole operation, they've got that. This public hearing was duly advertised in the Farmville Herald. Joining property owners were sent letters, you've got that in your packet. Also provided you a tax map of the site. Since this development bordered the town and was also in our Highway Corridor Overlay District, we had them come to the staff level meeting of the Development Review Committee. That has representatives from the town of Farmville, Department of Transportation, Health Department, and again, various county and town staff, including building officials, town public works, town planning, and county planning, along with the county administrator, and utility companies. So they did go through that process back in January, once we developed and negotiated with them for the facade you see now. With this being in a Highway Corridor Overlay District, it does... That district requires enhanced architectural building materials, which they've answered. You see the schematics and the drawings. Additional enhanced landscaping and other site accoutrements. I did prepare some staff conditions which are... that you can add to or take from. Since I sent those out, we had some feedback to the county administrator and myself about the potential for EV charging for electronic vehicles. So I've got with the applicant, and they have proffered a added condition, which you have at your place setting in bold, and I'll just read that in addition to what I already sent you. "The applicant to provide and construct infrastructure, including conduits and adequate spacing, to make the application property EV charging ready." My understanding from the developer and Wawa is, they don't... Wawa is a corporation, doesn't actually provide electric. They go through a third-party solution, but this will get the sites prepped for a third-party vendor, should they choose to locate there. I'll be glad to answer any questions of you. Like I said, VDOT did look at this from a transportation safety standpoint. One thing I will add, in the Highway Corridor District, it does require joint shared entrances, which the applicant has provided in their site plan. There's property between this corner and Lowe's that the IDA has a marketing sign on. The entrance for Wawa will be a joint shared entrance where you could have access to those properties. So you won't see another curb cut between this property and Lowe's for more turn in and turns out. And VDOT specified what you have in the site plan, the taper and a turn lane.
And there is also an entrance off of Commerce?
Yes, there is a secondary entrance off of Commerce Road, which will help alleviate some traffic, intersection traffic as well. So I think it's a well-laid out plan. VDOT looked at it specifically for traffic safety when we got this early on. In fact, we shared it with them well before the January 26 Development Review Committee, so they knew kind of how to prepare their site plan. So from that standpoint, county staff is of the opinion it's generally compatible with the commercial zoning district, and will have minimal impacts on surrounding properties. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Love?
I have a question, please.
Sure.
Maybe two, actually. So I understand what you just said about the IDA property. But there's a part of this property that looks like there's no development plan on it, like the southern part of this site. So basically, north of the IDA property, but south of the parking lot is shown on the plan. You see the part I'm talking about?
The triangular portion?
Yeah, kind of triangular shape. Is there... Was there any discussion about plans for that part of the property?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll let the applicant answer. I think the applicant answered, there's not enough there, I don't believe, to develop, and you're going to have storm facilities and so forth in that area. So... But I'll let them answer that.
Oh, wait.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
I think it's just additional acreage at this point. Open space.
Hey, Rob, has VDOT looked at any more about the congestion with school traffic and everything here?
I mean, they look at all that when they're looking at... They look at intersection impacts, and they... We actually...
I know it's only a certain time in the morning, maybe in the evening when it's...
Well, they look at the...
It gets crazy.
They look at the traffic impact of this particular station with eight pumps and the convenience store that has a class in the... In the... As far as turn in and turnout and traffic generation. So they actually recommended approval, which they don't always do for sites, but their recommendation was approval.
No, I think the entrances are fine.
The Commerce Lane does entrance... Back entrance does help some... Take... Release some pressure. It's another way to get in and out of the property. But they resolutely were okay with this, and it has capacity. When you're coming through that intersection, you'll be able to get in that turn lane, and it has good capacity on 15 to get in and out of the site.
Any other questions for Mr. Love, from the board? Thank you again, sir. Would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation or give us a brief overview?
How you doing? My name's Mike Varga. I'm the real estate engineer with Wawa for the Virginia region. Basically, what I do is I help facilitate and help support the development of each Wawa project within the state of Virginia, whether that's helping the engineers, the contractors, jurisdictions, help to answer any questions they may have in regard to Wawa standards, their process. And obviously, speaking on behalf of Wawa and what we're trying to accomplish with coming into new counties and new towns and trying to become a, you know, a good partner and becoming a part of the community as well, is something that we, you know, we try to uphold and try to strive for. But, you know, speaking to, you know, this particular project, we're excited to be part of, you know, Prince Edward County, Farmville, and we look forward to, you know, becoming a good partner with everyone here and with this community. And again, if there's any questions or anything that I can answer on the Wawa end, I'll try my best. And if there's any questions I don't know, I'll get you an answer as soon as I possibly can.
Would it be a typical 24-hour?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board?
The same question I asked a moment ago, maybe you can answer, if there are plans to develop the southern extent of it.
Right, as of right now, there are no plans to develop anything on there.
Do you have a projected start date?
As of right now...
Is everything approved?
I do not, but our typical... You know, that's up to also the developer with their timelines, as well as our timeline. We typically take about six months, about six months, once we accept the pad for our construction, from start to open on our end. But there is obviously some work the developer has to do prior to that, including, you know, rough grading, stormwater implementation, things like that.
We plan to file for site plan approval as soon as the board approves the project.
Great, thank you. Thank you. With no other questions, thank you very much, sir.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. We did have two people sign to speak, sign up to speak, Mr. Rick Ewing.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just get this...
There you go, it should be... Okay, there you go, okay.
Don't be too... Just to hide behind here. I'm the library director, serving Prince Edward County, Farmville, and Buckingham County. And as the public library, I'm always interested in the development of the county and the... Keep... Getting people here, keeping them here if they were from here, and attracting new ones, new folks. And in terms of Wawa, unless my memory is faulty, which it might be, I can remember probably back when I was about 10 or 12 years old, and I'm 65, the Wawa next to my dad's office in New Jersey. And I don't know if that makes sense timeline-wise, but so Wawa goes back in my memory a long way. And I've always said about the library that the library is a measure of the community. A community with a good library is attractive to people, you know, educators, doctors, plumbers, everybody. Especially anyone with a family. And in an unusual or way that my mind works, if I drive into a town and I see a Wawa, that's kind of a measure of the community as well. And it's, you know, hey, this is a real town, this is... They've got a Wawa. And, you know, my other library's in Dilwyn, and I wasn't here, I moved here seven years ago. But some couple of years, few years before that, they got a McDonald's, and they practically had a parade because they kind of put them on the map up in Dilwyn. And in a bigger way, maybe a better way in my mind, Wawa kind of does that, too. So I'm just speaking in favor of it from my perspective, as just a resident of this area and a little bit of the library, too, because I think it'll help. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, Serena Thornton.
Good evening. Good evening, thanks for letting me speak. So I'm gonna start my comments by showing you that. Guess you can tell who I support. My name's Serena Thornton. I'm an economist, a professor at Hampton Cindy College, and I'm also a resident of Prince Edward County. I've lived here since 1996. I grew up in Philadelphia and have many, many fond memories of Wawa. I was actually home this past weekend visiting my mom and was able to visit a Wawa while I was up in Philadelphia. In my experience, Wawa's always been a good neighbor to the communities. They support local community efforts, like, you know, local rec soccer teams and other kinds of programs that happen in our communities. And so I think Wawa would be a very good neighbor for that reason. I also want to speak, though, as an economist. Competition is a good thing. Competition helps provide a wider variety of services for people. Competition also keeps prices lower for people. So I think adding a Wawa to compete with the Sheets and various other gas stations/convenience stores that we have in town would be a very good thing for all of us who live here. I also want to speak from the perspective of the town and the town-seeking avenues. We have the very, very good fortune, as you know, to live at the intersection of two major arteries, right? We've got 460 going east-west, and we've got 15 going north-south. And I think if there was Wawa here and so close to that intersection of those two arteries, people, instead of getting gas and getting something to eat either west of us, or east of us, or north of us, or south of us, Wawa's got the kind of name recognition and the kind of reputation for quality that I think people would stop here. And given the taxes that we have on sales tax, prepared food, I think that would be really good for the county and those of us who live here. So I speak in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, is there anybody else here in the audience that would like to speak? You're more than welcome to.
Short and sweet, we're in support of living in Prince Edward County, up in here long time, several people have it, I'll be up there. We're definitely in support of Wawa. We're just... She just said about the competition, you know, between the two sheets and so forth. Side note, Wawa food, bird, and sheep.
I'm sorry, sir, could you state your name, just for the record?
For the record, Richard Pureak.
Okay.
I think she already came.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anybody else wish to speak for or against the special use permit? With that, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and give the board a chance to review. A quick comment from my standpoint, just to echo what was said somewhat. If we can find more vehicles, more people to stop and get off 460 or 15 for a reason, if this creates that reason, that benefits not only Wawa, but everybody else potentially in town, whether it be restaurants, hotels, whatever the case may be. It's just another reason for people to get off the highway there and hopefully bring more business to the county. That's my personal comment. But from the board here, please, any questions, comments?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
You'd be dispensing diesel fuel as well as gas, kerosene? Diesel, yes. Any tractor-trailers going to be coming in and out? You don't have high-speed? Many for calls and pickups, which will be good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, from the board's standpoint, we do have our list of conditions. We added one here, which was the EV charging. We added that condition on there. I guess at this time, as chairman, I'm looking for a motion for or against the approval of the special use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with the additional condition about the EV charging.
Terrific. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we'll take a roll, then. We'll go around again. Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Womack?
Yes.
The board approves unanimously, passing this on to the county board of supervisors. Thank you, everyone, for your time. We look forward to having you in the community.
Go back to the agenda here.
Yep.
Supervisor actions?
Yep.
If we can have supervisor actions, Mr. Love?
I want to give you all a brief, we really didn't have any supervisor vote on your application from the prior month. Tread-O-Z Investments with the subdivision, Manufactured Home, they actually pulled their application two days after your... After the public hearing. That site is in final design now as a traditional subdivision. I've been in talks with their engineer and giving them the parameters on filing stormwater permits with us, ENS permits. They're still looking at total build-out of around 56 lots. Final soils testing will determine the number of lots, but they're not looking to... What they told me, they weren't looking to increase it majorly. They were still hoping to get 56 lots. It's going to be a phased development. They're going to actually work on the one road that's closest to Farmville, the town portion of that property, I call it the dog leg, that wraps around the fairgrounds, because they're going to apply with the town to do the homes in... On the town portion. So that first section will have more build-out, will have all the build-out. And then, if... Once that fills up or gets to a part of completion, then they will develop the other road, road network, and the other lots on the other side. So it'll be separated as far as stormwater application, because it's a drainage area kind of in the middle of that property, so they'll do half, and then they'll come back later at a later date with half. But when I... That's all I know right now, but basically, they'll... What they're required to do now is modular or stick-build homes only. So that's what I'm...
Which are by rights, so it won't come back to the planning commission?
Yeah, it won't come back to you all. It's going to go through... It's following the subdivision regulations, which still does require them to have a buffer on the south side where they join the Highbridge Trail, because south of that property is an A2 zone, so we require a buffer between R2 and A2. So they'll still have a standard 25-foot buffer on the south. They did say they were going to also pull that cul-de-sac back up away from the Highbridge Trail after they got the comments from DCR at our meeting, so they're not going to have any type of connection. There's still going to be that... The longstanding easement that goes through the property for a different property owner is still in the same location, that's not going to change. But that's where we are on that. Old business we've got.
Old business, we do have the zoning ordinance amendment.
So I took the comments I received from you all, I went through the document with each of your comments and tried to address them. Also, tonight, I placed at your place setting something the county administrator and I worked on this afternoon. We realized after looking at the... And pardon my numbering on the bottom, I just printed this sheet out of the original document. Your page 82, I gave you a replacement sheet. Item H, which is at the very bottom of non-commercial kennel, the non-commercial kennel didn't have a trigger. In other words, if we didn't specify a threshold for when this... When you'd be considered a non-commercial kennel, anything could be considered a non-commercial kennel. So we looked at that as... And added that for this purpose, it would be five dogs that exceeded six months of age or older, where they're being onboarded, housed, or offered for sale. I think the county minister had some additional comments on that.
Yeah, when we were originally pulling together ideas and possible changes, one of the things that county, and I'll say, not only zoning, but animal control are dealing with right now is a plethora of dogs in this community. Our shelter is full. We are not able to pick up dogs because our shelter is full. Partly, a lot... You know, we have a lot of adoptable dogs. A lot of the dogs picked up are hunting dogs. If you go to a lot of other counties, they are pit bulls and stuff that is, I would say, not as desirable from an adoption standpoint. I think we are very lucky, and that ours are. But, you know, one of the things that other counties have done, we've defined what is a commercial kennel, which is somewhere you take your animal to be boarded, groomed, taken care of while you're out of town on vacation for the week. But then also defining a non-commercial. And part of that is, it could be a hunt club, it could be somebody... We have a lot of backyard breeders in the area. But one of the things we wanted to do, and you look into the different zoning categories, like in the A1, which is your majority of the county, more rural sections, this would be allowed by right, but you do have some restrictions there with buffers. Because we do have instances, and we've had here a few in the last few weeks, where you've got houses close together, and you've got 10 dogs running loose at the one house, and they're getting into all the neighbors' stuff, chasing the neighbors' pets, chasing neighbors' livestock. So there would be some parameters. Then you go into your A2, the more, what we call residential portions of the county, and then into... It would be allowed by a special use permit. So the planning commission, the board, would have some additional oversight that, you know, maybe if it was impacting five or six houses pretty close, y'all may want to put some other restrictions on it. Certainly, anybody who's existing now would be grandfathered in. This would be kind of moving forward, that we'd be dealing with that. And then we didn't allow it, I believe, Rob, in some of the residential districts. And that's certainly something that this group of board can amend as we go through the process, or even later amend it to allow. But, you know, we had neglected, and we were stealing from other ordinances, but, you know, if John Pringleman has two dogs at his house, we don't... You're not a non-commercial kennel, you know, there's a threshold. And by doing... In my old... One of my old communities, we had a limit, but setting, not including dogs less than six months of age or older. If somebody has a couple females and raises a couple litters of puppies, we don't... That shouldn't be included in the definition of a non-commercial kennel. So we want to make sure to exclude that. So I think we've covered those bases, yet avoided the instances where somebody comes in in a close-knit community and puts in 25 hunting dogs and creates outdoor in pens and creates some racket. And when maybe that... That can have a pretty significant impact on the neighborhood. So at least it... You know, if you're on 100 acres in the... Again, in the A1, go for it. You know, you've got plenty of room, you can do that. But if you're in a neighborhood, you know, maybe there ought to be a little bit more oversight over that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Is there any?
Thank you very much. And I guess on behalf of the board, I do want to thank Doug and Rob for all the hard work they put into the... This whole zoning ordinance amendment. It was a lot of work. And I know everybody here, except one, met the deadline, I apologize. I spent all weekend, and I have another 928 additions, adjustments, and deletions I'd like to give you. They're in a big box out in front of you.
Okay, we'll take them. We'll get them ready before we advertise.
No, just kidding. Anything else in old business?
Well, I would say just on here, we had... This was not a complete retooling. We're just trying to grab... Get a handle on things we've been grappling with, you know, private use camping. We've had some hearings that haven't been successful. Short-term tourist rental, that's a big business in the county, we wanted to define that. Some other things, just something I found, and I want to talk to... With Trey Powell, in a residential area, we didn't have a setback on accessory building, not from the side yard, not from the rear yard, and not from the highway. Can you imagine putting an accessory garage to neighbor... To property on... two neighbor, two property owners that touch each other, and putting them zero inches off of V-dots right away and having somebody come through and cream one on a curb or something? So we had put 10 feet on that. We're not trying to make it a hardship on anyone. And again, anything that's out there that's existing closer, they'd be grandfathered. But these are some safety issues. If you can think about two buildings that could be zero offset, would touch each other or overlap if they have an overhang and could be a fire hazard if it was a potential fire garage. We don't want neighborhoods to catch on fire and have a burn like you would in Chicago, like the territorial. So we try to put space out in 10 feet. We felt was enough to get fire and rescue around, fire particularly, with turnout gear, some equipment, hoses, in case of a fire. So it was things like that that we've tried to address here and make it an ordinance that encourages public safety and convenience and welfare.
Robbie, we've got one complaint on backham Sidney Road or Treble Park.
We do. Yep.
Where the accessory structure is literally on the neighbor's property. I think what they didn't do was survey it before building the building.
That's right. And the building is now... The building is not shored up. So the leaning part of the building is over on the neighbor's property, and they want to cut it off. And then, so we get, you know, we're getting into... I'm having to tell them, well, I don't enforce that. But, you know, if you cut somebody's building and it falls, well, we've had the building official go out there and look at it from shoring it up. But the owner has issues because he's not going to be allowed to go on the neighbor's property to put a two-by-four to shore it up while he works on the inside. So having a building on a property line is just bad news for everybody. And it leads to longstanding neighbor feuds. That site apparently goes back a decade. So we're dealing with it now, again, because it fell back one time and then it's fallen again. So those are things we kind of have grappled with. Also, mobile food establishments, a big one, food trucks, everybody has one. We wanted to kind of add that in there. And rural event centers. We just had a special use permit. And, you know, with them having housing, that allowed me to bring it here. But we want to quantify some of these uses that are the trend in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So if you're comfortable at this point, what I would... With what we added with the kennels, if you're ready, maybe look at next month on this as...
For a public hearing?
For a public hearing. And then if we... You know, if something comes out of the public hearing, you can still table it at that point. But if you're comfortable, maybe putting this out for the public to get a view on. Maybe a motion to that effect.
How's the board feel? I personally think it's time to get it out there, you know? But...
One question?
Yes.
Will that be standards for the kennel? And fees for the application?
We don't have a fee in here in this code. There's a... The kennel fee is captured by the animal control or treasurer.
You would if it was a special use.
It would. If a special use permit, it would be...
So that means you have six dogs, you have six dogs and over?
Yeah. If you're in a A2 or that district, if it's out in the county on A1, you wouldn't have that and they wouldn't file for a special use permit. They would just get kennel tags.
So I'm in Prince... In Mahirance area.
Yeah, you just have...
So that's a A1.
You have... You could have it as a by right with, for a non-commercial, with kennel tags. And the kennel tags we purchase through the county, not through zoning, but just through treasurer. Okay.
No, I think it would make sense to get... Let's get it out to the public.
And we may have some comments that require this to be, to us to take a look at it again. But I mean, that's just kind of the feeling on it. You don't know until you put it out there.
Robbie, I wonder if I can get with you, you know, in the course of the week or next week, just to... You already have my comments.
Yep.
I appreciate you incorporating them in places. But just, I did sort of a hypothetical project when I went through the ordinance and just, I got tripped up on some definitions and just some of the structure of this. Like, my hypothetical was, what if I wanted to do a data center at Hit Park? Or elsewhere in the county? But anyway, just I... If I can just show you what I went through in trying to find permitted uses and things of that nature. It may not entail a change, but let me give you an example. Data centers define use as a commercial use, but it's allowed in commercial and industrial.
That's correct.
Okay. But it's not a defined industrial use. It's just, it's listed. So, and technology, business, same thing. It's defined under one of those, but not under both. But it's shown as an allowed use in both.
Yes, well...
And so maybe a good catch-all phrase to speak. Anything defined one place applies every place else.
Well, generally speaking, if you look at the industrial zone, it captures everything that's a by right in a traditional commercial is allowed in your industrial. And then if it's a special use permit, it requires a special use permit on the industrial. It's designated as a... We have use types.
Right. That's what I'm talking about.
Rather than duplicate and put it in two different places, it's a commercial use that's allowed in an industrial zone. So that's why it's just defined in one location, but allowed in multiple zones.
Yes.
Sort of like a retail store. We'd have, like a Dollar General, it can be, it's a by right in a commercial zone, but it's a special use permit in A1 or A2. So, but we've got it listed under, as a commercial-type use. So we... In Prince Edward County, and I was a little... I came from a different locality and I dealt with a different ordinance. But we have all these different use types, which they've put in categories. And then we've got definitions that relate to those. So they kind of build on each other.
Yes. And my simple suggestion is if it's defined in one place, but you see it popping up in other places, that definition applies wherever it pops up, unless otherwise indicated. To avoid the ambiguity of, is it the same definition no matter where you look?
Just stating that somewhere would be helpful.
Yeah, just one sentence would cover all of these examples.
We can get that in there. We can get that in there. Because I've got some time, I've got some time before we run the ad. So we're looking at y'all's March meeting. I can get with you on that. And we can come up with some language that satisfies that need. So if you want to, like I said, if you want to make a motion, it can include... We're going to add in some clarity.
Can we have a motion that it would include some clarity there relative to definitions? Like you said, just one sentence or so? Do we have a motion?
I'll so move.
Second? We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, we'll take a roll. Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Peary?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
And Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is passed. Thank you. I do also think, we all understand, this is always going to be a working document. Something's going to come up that we've never had before and we're going to have to make a decision there if, once it comes in front of the board here. We may be adding or changing, amending a little bit to this document down the road, but we do need something to start with, which we really don't have. So my hat's off again to Rob and Doug for putting this together.
Yeah, we'll likely look at this again after a conference of plan has been adopted. I think we'll have, with all the public input, we're going to get through that process. We'll probably want to come back and look at zoning and subdivision at some time in the future. I've got two new business items. Under new business, I've got one item that's not listed. We have been, obviously, we're getting thicker applications every month. I've got a small community solar coming to you next month. It's a lot of pages. It's about that they can... I've talked to the county administrator and wanted to know if anyone wanted to take advantage of the opportunity to get an iPad that the county would provide, that you would use for these meetings. In other words, you'd get the document and it would be on your iPad. If anybody still wants printed documents, we can certainly do that. But we're trying to do as much e-government as we can. So I don't know if you want to maybe raise some hands or maybe get back with me after tonight's meeting. But we're going to look into doing that. And we're in a budget process now. So tonight was the night I was going to bring this to you all.
Yeah, I think we want to include that in the budget if we can do that. Typically, the board adds some, not Luke doesn't always use his, so it's fine. Some others do, some don't, you know? But it helps us cut down the paper. They also, we've got the air card with the pad. So if you're out, even if you don't have Wi-Fi, you're still usually able to get it because you pick up.
Yeah. And these will have a SIM card. So they will have a connection that you don't have to use anybody else's wireless. It'll be connected, just like a cellular phone, for data purposes. And knowing that we've got conference of plan coming on the heels of this, we've got, I think we've probably got more solar coming. These application packets are getting thicker, not thinner. And we wanted to give you more information. So you have all the information we can get from them so you can make good, good, sound decisions. And it just cuts down, we don't want you to have to print things at home and use up toner or ink. So thought this was a good next step. Okay.
I think it makes sense.
I was going to suggest on changes for the zoning orders, just set as a summary of the zoning change, instead of 112 pages or, you know, 60 pages.
129.
120, yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, that would be good.
I got you.
Robbie, tell me about this cell service. Is compatible with cell service?
The... You're talking about iPads? It has a SIM card in it, just like your cellphone. So it has, it has, it pulls its signal from cell towers, not wireless Wi-Fi, like you might get in this building or McDonald's. It's got a direct connection to cellular network.
The reason I'm asking this question, Henry knows a lot of you don't know where I live. It's over in the bottom.
If you have bad cell service, then you'll have bad iPad service.
I got a $500 booster in the attic.
Really?
Didn't even use my cellphone at home.
Wow.
Yep. It's at the end of the drive.
I live right in the road from Lou. Only internet we could get was HughesNet and if the bird flies over it.
Yeah. Well, if you decide to drive to town, I'll make sure I have a full pot of coffee and a space for you to come, come, come download your packet. How about that? It's the best I can do. Nope.
Anything else on new business?
One other item we didn't do last month that Karen Everhart reminded me. We didn't set an alternate date for April because that meeting conflicts with the board meeting. And I've got a feeling we'll probably have live applications for that meeting. So I'd like to go ahead, if we could, and look at what day of the week... If you want to meet the same week or if you want to meet the following week. If you meet the same week, it makes it a little easier on running ads for the following, if we pass anything on to the board. But I'm certainly open. It would have been the 18th of April. But that's a board meeting night for budget.
Is there a problem during the day before, Monday?
Monday, no.
No?
Okay.
That's fine for me.
Any other day?
Okay.
I have conflicts Monday and Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay. The town planning commissioner meets that Wednesday.
Okay.
Thursday?
Thursday is open.
You want to set, is everybody?
Well, we set a tentative date and...
I'll make sure the room's available. I feel like it probably will be. What's that, a tentative date and we can revisit this next month?
Okay.
For April 20th?
In the meantime, everybody just try to look at your calendar for the next meeting and see if that date will work. It'd be Thursday, April 20th.
Mm-hmm. And like I said, we'd only meet if we have an application, but I got a feeling we probably will. I'm having an uptick on those.
If you get a chance to look at all their paperwork, right? Go through all that?
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's the last thing I had.
Do you need a head count on the iPads?
You can let me know, yeah. Because we would have put it in the budget for this Friday.
Well, I'm interested.
Okay. Is anybody not interested? It might be easier. If you don't, that's fine. You're not interested?
No.
Okay. Okay, got one. You have one, right?
Do that. I'm taking it on the drive. At the office if you're on.
That's fine. That's fine. All right. We'll get that in the... I'll get it in our budget. I'll have my budget request, which goes in Friday.
Mr. Weiss, you mentioned you had something else for new business?
Yes. This is a very spontaneous thing, but happy Mardi Gras, everybody. Why am I wishing you happy Mardi Gras?